Good afternoon. The City of Pleasantville, a work meeting. Today's date is September 20, 2021, time is 6:31. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper in the form of Open Book Meeting, otherwise known as Sunshine Hall Local.
Swan, Scott, Davenport.
President.
Seminole, Eric, Thomas, Fred, Pomona.
President.
Sishtum.
President.
Tom, Jim.
Motion to approve the free misswording. Motion to adjourn.
Aye. Okay, first of all, Virginia's a presentation by Bernard Capital Partners Management where we refer into Council Joe Fleishman for introduction.
Well, to proceed now?
Yes.
Okay. So, in the audience tonight, we have three representatives of Bernard Capital Partners. Mr. President, would you like to turn it over to Mr. Rowley to introduce his representatives that are with him, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rowley, I'd like to step up to the microphone and let the podium introduce yourself and then, of course, the members that are with you.
Mr. Fleishman, I'll hand it over to my client, Julius Bedford.
Sure.
Julius, you.
It's yours.
Cool. Is this where I should stand? It looks like I'm in front of this banner. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Julius Bedford. I'm the Vice President at Bernard Capital Partners. I'm here today with my colleague, Managing Director Dan Garrity, our attorney Kent, I'm blanking out your last name.
Rowley.
It's not Alan Inovry, otherwise.
Rowley.
If it was the name of the firm, he wouldn't be here with us today. He'd probably be off in the sky somewhere. We also have Bobby Laws, who's here representing us on the local capacity, and also Robert, Bob Tyler, who represents IGWT, who we'll make reference to later, but is largely leading our minority inclusion efforts as part of our presentation, as part of our proposal this afternoon. We didn't want to, you know, spend a lot of time, wanted to give as much time to Q and A as we could, but I thought it was important we spend a good amount of time introducing who we are, why we're here, what we are hoping to provide as an opportunity to the City of Pleasantville. And we spent a good amount of time with the representatives as well, speaking through what we think the value proposition and how we responded to the request for qualifications. And we've just very grateful for the opportunity to present our proposal publicly as well so that everyone in the community has a chance to ask questions and understand, you know, what we're about. So, just a very brief background of our firm. We are Bernard Capital Partners. We are a private equity company based out of Louisiana. A bit of our DNA comes from operations. The Shaw Group, which is, which was a large industrial services firm, also based in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, was founded by our founder, Jim Bernhardt. And over a series of decades, he grew that business to a business that was doing more than $6 billion of revenue, largely servicing industrial businesses, utilities, and other industries in the energy and utility space. In 2013, they sold that business to a company called Chicago Bridge and Iron for about $3.3 billion. And that was the genesis of our firm today, Bernard Capital Partners, where our founders decided, they're not done yet, they still found a lot of opportunities, continue making investments in communities by building businesses and partnering with people to provide essential services to infrastructure assets. We have a couple of flagship funds where we, you know, we do the standard private equity thing where we try to buy out private businesses. But the more we operated in this industrial asset services space within the infrastructure and energy services space, the more we realized an opportunity, and opportunities were brought to us to make investments in hard assets, into actual systems, to make a more direct investment in communities rather than to support the business leaders within them to grow their businesses, but to actually make investments in the assets that were, one, publicly owned, and two, providing essential services that could benefit from our expertise, but also from our capital. So, we recognized pretty quickly that this was a different type of funds, that required an asset and investor base that valued stability, that valued predictability, more than it valued high returns. You know, our investor base is made up of a large number of school endowments, pensioners, retiring accounts, folks that see the opportunity to invest in communities as a reliable way of earning returns that are steady, stable, predictable. And it's a true win-win for communities like the City of Pleasantville and other cities we're working in as well, because, you know, today there are a lot of pressures facing municipalities. There's a lot of pressures coming out of the COVID pandemic, which we're actually still in the thick of, looking around, this is not generally how the room would look. But, you know, one other detrimental impact to the pandemic has been on tax revenues, on dollars that were spent to, or maybe previously allocated to make investments in the future and now being used just to flood holes. You know, these are already things that are exacerbating other issues, these were investments into infrastructure, whether that be transportation infrastructure, whether it be investments into community building, economic development, other social infrastructure that makes this an attractive place to live for your kids, for employees to bring, to stay, for employers to bring business to. All that takes capital and vision to place it within a city. What we found, however, is that even in communities where some of the financial solutions aren't most obviously present, taxes or issuing new bonds, there are still core assets, core systems that have value, and that value is in some ways trapped within that system. Let me put it differently. There are a lot, there are a number of assets within this city that produce revenue, that have charges towards customers. And what we've developed is a solution that helps the city monetize that value today without having to sell that asset, call it the utility in this case, the wastewater collection utility, without having to sell it, you can monetize the value that's in it, and rather than redirect that value directly into that system, also allocate some of that value to other key priorities within the city, whether that be transportation, whether that be paying off other city debts, alleviating some pressure off the taxes. That's the solution that we see as being available here in Pleasantville and other communities we're working with. Now, to get a bit more specific, what we're proposing here is an opportunity to invest roughly $75 million of value into the City of Pleasantville from Bernard Capital Partners. To break that down into pieces, that's $15 million into an upfront cash payment to the city. That's a payment that has, that happens immediately upon closing of our transaction and has no strings attached. As I said, it can be allocated towards any number of priorities within the city. It's not tied directly into investment going back into the wastewater system asset. Second part of that $75 million headline value. We will continue, as part of our agreement, which we would expect to be sustained for about 39 years, we will continue to make a $100,000 payment to the city, in large part just to make sure that we're providing some, you know, sustainable, predictable transfer to the city of value from the asset on an ongoing basis. So, you think about the accumulation of those $100,000 payments being just roughly $3.9 million. And additionally, we recognize that, you know, there are immediate upgrades we want to make to the system as it stands today. You know, my colleague Dan could speak more to some of the specific improvements we want to make, but just to give a headline number, we want to make about $10.9 million of investments just into improving the existing asset base over the next six years. And we believe a reasonable, sustainable amount of investment going forward would be at least $1.4 million annually for the remaining 33 years of the proposed agreement as well. So, the cumulative impact of all that investment is $75 million from BCP. A good portion of that comes upfront. It's intractable, it's to the city. A good portion of that is sustained over time, and a good portion of that's going directly into the, into the system itself. We think what makes this a special arrangement is that it also provides opportunities to unlock value and provide those funds towards other areas in the city. But beyond the financial benefits of our, of our deal, you're getting partnership with a fund like ourselves, a firm like ourselves, that has the pedigree of being an operator, that has that operational expertise, all without selling your system. At all points in time, and this part's really worth reiterating, the system itself, the utility itself, is publicly owned, owned by the city. You know, we'll talk a little bit more as to why that's a bit unique, why we think our proposal and our willingness to structure the transaction this way is a good differentiator for us. But it comes with really good benefits to make a deal like this that much more worthwhile. For one, if the system's publicly owned, it still continues to benefit from federal disaster relief funds. So, hurricane comes through, you know, we live in Louisiana, we are feeling this now, and we do every year, but when a hurricane comes through, if it's a private investor-owned utility, the utility, you know, pays for that indirectly or directly through customer rates. They get time to do it over time, but if it's a publicly owned asset, FEMA steps in and provides a significant portion of those recovery dollars at no expected, at no incremental cost to customers either today or in the future. That's a huge benefit in maintaining a publicly owned asset. That's why we don't want to disrupt that structure, and that's why we protect that in our partnership structure. In addition to that, by staying publicly owned, you stay locally regulated, that means this body, or however, whichever operating committee becomes a part of, you know, dealing with our relationship over the term of the agreement, continues to operate and continues to provide oversight into all the services that we would provide. They continue to have oversight over how rates are set, you know, as, you know, designed within an operating agreement that's visible for everyone, but it's this body that has oversight over that. If you were to sell the utility, all of those responsibilities, all that oversight, gets relegated to a state agency. It doesn't have the same level of sensitivity to what citizens in Pleasantville are being charged. They don't have the same level of sensitivity to what citizens in Pleasantville are being charged in relation to the towns next door that you guys may be competing for business with, or for citizens with. That's a particular sensitivity that is embedded in our deal that we think makes this a true partnership rather than a just quick sale of your utility where you relinquish all control going forward. That's a major benefit, that's what makes this, and it's heart, a true partnership that with teeth in the agreement to make sure that we have to abide by our responsibilities to this community, both with our pocketbooks, but also with the influence that you have as a local utility provider that is an employer and also a citizen of the community. When I mean, when I speak of partnership, what that implies is that when the city does well, we do well. And that puts us in a position where we want the city to do well, we want it to grow, we want it to attract new citizens, attract employers, and attract new customers for us. That makes us an economic and community development engine for the city. And making sure that all the activities we do along that line reflects this community, we've made sure to bring on the folks at IGWT to lead that effort as a, or particularly relates towards diversity and inclusion. We want to make sure that everything we're doing is in line with what the priorities are of the city and reflects the city as it is today, but just tries to help, give it the tools to grow and develop as much on it as it can on its own. And, you know, I think, as I touch on that piece, it might make sense just to, you know, allow our partners at IGWT to just speak in particular on what our efforts are going to be there. So.
Bobby, if you don't mind. No, I'd be happy to. Thanks. Thanks, Julius. And family, y'all pray for me while I go maskless for a few minutes. Thanks, thanks for having us. What Julius was talking about a few seconds ago, and let me just go broad stroke for a minute, because Bernard Capital is the private equity firm, those are the money guys. Suez is our partner that operates the systems. IGWT, we're general contractors, engineers, and construction management. We do the hard knocks out there. We actually build or oversee or engineer or manage. So, when you hear Julius talking about a true partnership, and that's what a public-private partnership should be, both sides benefit, and that's when the private partner embraces the spirit and intent of a public partner. And that's, that's when the community benefits, when, I mean, real benefits, when the businesses get involved in the process, where you affect employment, and the employment or the first hire is here. And, and we involve training and make a difference. That's a real, when you hear Julius say a true partnership, that's what he's talking about, where you make a difference, not where you come in and exploit a situation. And that's why I'm not the brainchild of this concession model, but I boast about it like it's my own child, particularly when it works. It won't fit every scenario, but it fits this one. And the team that we put together, we believe, is going to make a difference. We, so, as we begin to build our team, we wanted strong people who understood this community. And I dragged my longtime friend Bobby Laws in with me, and I said, we got to do this together. And, and he said, no, this is, this is why, I mean, we've looked at other projects here. We looked at projects on the Orange Loop, but we're going to be vested in this community regardless. But in a true partnership, both sides benefit. I'll get it back to you, Les. Ken, you ready to?
Yeah, why don't you, Ken, maybe you could speak a little bit more as to exactly the legal particulars of what makes our structure unique in this thing?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I'm going to follow the need there and check off my mask real briefly here, so, but maintain my distance at the same time, as you're all saying. I'm Ken Rowley, I'm a partner at Alan Inovry. We're the external counsel to Bernard Capital in this transaction. Just to give you an idea of my experience in this space, I've been doing these types of concession deals for about 30 years. In the water sector in the U.S., I did the first one using this structure in Bayonne, New Jersey. And if you followed that or have heard about it, you would have heard that it's been a resounding success, both for the investors, but also for the community. So, what we're seeking to do here is replicate what's already been done successfully in New Jersey before in Bayonne, using the same legal structure, the same statute that we used in Bayonne, and using the same contract that we used in Bayonne. The benefits of following that model compared to, say, an investor-owned utility model are many, and I'll just tick off a few of those advantages. First, and you've heard this a few times already, the city's going to own the system, going to continue to be the owner. And the contract that we're going to put in place is essentially a partnership contract where the investor and the operator work collaboratively with the city through an operating committee that's created, that will oversee operations, that will approve an asset management plan, a rolling five-year asset management plan that's established every year or refreshed every year. And in that way, as compared to an investor-owned utility model, this operating committee that the city is constituted with has input. You're not giving anything up to the private sector, what you're doing is partnering with the private sector. So, when an asset management plan is proposed to the city, the city and its representatives sit down with this operating committee, together with the concessionaire, which is what we call the party that will be running the system, and collaborate, and agree on a plan. And then, once that plan's agreed, it's implemented by the concessionaire. If you were doing this with an investor-owned utility that was going to buy the system, they're not going to talk to you. They're going to go off and do their own thing. Sure, they're regulated by the state, but you won't have your own representatives in the room with the concessionaire talking about the improvements that need to be made and the changes to the system that need to come about. They're going to do their own thing. Secondly, and this is, I think, one of the most important features of this deal, they can't make super profits on this. They're not going to make big returns on this investment. The returns are regulated in the contract, and if the amount of money that BCP makes on this is above what's in the contract, what we've all negotiated, and which has been vetted by your advisors, that money goes into a rate stabilization fund. And that fund is in place to provide a cushion so that if unexpected costs arise, or let's say the demographics of Pleasantville decrease, the, the capital recovery mechanism doesn't get passed on to the rate payers, it goes into that rate stabilization fund, where any extra profits that are made would fund that. We're also going to pre-fund the rate stabilization fund. So, with the upfront payment that's going to be made, a portion of that capital goes into that fund. So, you've got a rainy day fund in place to ensure that if unexpected events occur, you go to that rainy day fund before the rate payers actually have to, have to come out of pocket for that. So, the whole thing's regulated, there's no way that they can make super profits out of this, okay? Thirdly, you're going to get a world-class system. The contract has operating standards, which set forth key operating performance indicators, minimum standards for quality of affluence. It's a, you know, 50-page document that really holds the operator's feet to the fire. And in fact, the standards that are in the operating standards that Suez has developed in other deals go beyond what the law requires. So, the system that's going to be delivered to the citizens of Pleasantville is actually going to be more than what the law would have an investor-owned utility. Okay? So, world-class operating standards, world-class system coming to the city by virtue of the way the contract is structured. And then, I think finally, I'd say that when the contract is over, expired, you get the system back, and you get the system back in this improved state. So, throughout the term of the contract, you can't just run down the quality and then hand back a bad system to the city. What the contract says, you have to continually improve that system, and to make sure that at the time you hand it back, it's in excellent condition. So, really, what you're doing in this deal is investing in the city. The rate payers are investing in the city because all the rates you pay go into the system, and then at the end of the contract, you get, you get the system back. You can reconcession the system if you want to and get another upfront payment from somebody else. You can take it back yourself and, you know, take over the operations if that's what the city wants to do. And heaven forbid, you could sell it to an IOU if you wanted to do that, but we don't think you'll want to after you see how well this, this system works. So, those are the advantages, I think, of this structure as compared to just selling to, to an investor-owned utility. It's a partnership. The city's going to have input. These guys are going to have people, representatives of the city, your representatives, looking over their shoulder at every step through an operating committee to make sure things are done properly and are made in accordance with the way the contract is, is written. So, I'll pause there. I can go in and talk about the structure of the contract if that's of interest, give you sort of a rough idea of how it works, or would that be helpful? If you have the slides in front of you, there's a boxes and arrows page, which I think is on page 10. This, by the way, is my favorite part of these presentations because it's boxes and arrows, and as lawyers, we're boxes and arrows people, which is kind of an occupational hazard. But if you can go to that diagram, what you'll see is the way the deal is structured. And there's an organigram. So, if you look at the top, it's basically, you know, it's, it's the city, right? The city will enter into a contract with a specially formed company that will be the operator, the concessionaire.
Page nine.
Okay. Sorry, page nine, for those of you who are following along with, with the handout.
It's not on the screen. It's not on the screen.
We don't have in and outs for the, for the audience.
It's up to you.
You know, I think we should hand this out to you all, just because it'll give you an idea.
We don't have a hand to work for, unfortunately. It's you. Julius, someone. Yes, I'm here. And you're even on the screen.
Okay. So, if you take a look at the, this chart, this is going to show you how, you know, basically the contract works and how money flows, right? So, you have in the middle, here's the city. The city, which will remain the owner of the asset, is going to enter into a contract with a new company that's going to be formed, that will be owned by BCP and by the operator Suez, okay? That contract will contain everything that I've been explaining to you, rate regulation, operating standards, cooperation through an operating committee with, with the city. The, the special company, the special purpose company then, is going to invest in the system and then is going to recover its investment through rates that are charged to the customers. Now, here's an important point here. We agreed with the city that you're going to continue paying your bills to the city, okay? So, you don't have to come and deal with the private operator and paying your bills, it's going to be the same that you've been doing before the deal. And then, the city, once it receives those payments, it pays them back to the concessionaire, and that's the revenue that they earn from this deal, that's their business. And to the extent that there is capital invested in the system, that is going to go into an asset base, which then is going to result in an adjustment to rates over the term, the 39-year term of the contract, so that what's invested can be recovered by the investors. But here's the important thing, the way it's going to be recovered is over 39 years, right? So, millions of dollars of investment, your immediate reaction will be, that's going to be expensive to rate payers, right? It's not, because we spread it out over 39 years, so that the rate of increase in your, your utility bill is going to be, is going to be manageable, it's going to be comparable to all the other systems in this area. And you're going to get the benefit of this investment because the investment's spread out over such a long period of time. And that's the key to these concession-type deals. They're long-term deals, the investors don't get their money back immediately, they've got to stay and form the contract for 39 years, and over that 39-year period, they'll get their money back. And that's the way that we control the rates in these deals. I'm going to pause there for questions, if anybody has any on the, on the structure. Or anything else about these deals where we've done them elsewhere, if you have any questions about what's happened in Bayonne or what's happened in the other municipalities? No? Questions?
Mine is officially approved, Senator. My name is Reston's Harmon, and I does my homework. I'm sorry, guys, coming out of a meeting the other day. But prior to that, I have listening a resolution that's one year and nine months old, Resolution 174-2019. So, we have been working and pounding on this project, and compliments to the city fathers that I've been voting on the whole, long-time company, 44 years. that I've been voting on the whole, long-time company, 44 years. And I'm here tonight, just tickled, first to be back where we can sit and communicate, not keeping it to television. But the Burnhart operations, in my discovery, are pretty good guys. And to make my dissertation very brief, just to say that it is my hope that my city fathers are going to support this resolution tonight. And I have communicated with many of my good friends in the city, and some of them got decent and came out tonight. And to shut my mouth, I'm tickled to what I hear. And as I repeat myself to say that I hope that my legislators vote to support this this evening, and indeed, many of the people from this lovely city are here tonight because of my telephone. And so I'm going to have to come.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor.
You did.
Yeah, please do. Yeah, please. I think, just to close up, we want to make sure you guys also hear from Bobby Laws here.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much, Mayor Ward, Council President, the entire council body, solicitors, Business Administrator. I mean, you guys have been pivotal in this whole thing, and it's been a long process. The gentleman just... Let me take this off. As Mr. Harmon just expressed, it's been a long road. And it's been a long road, because you do have people in the town that care enough to vet everything. And trust me, we've been vetted. They've vetted everything. It's fine, though, because that means that they're taking a vested interest in their town. Deals like this do not work unless all parties are vested, right? Too many business deals happen in our area where people see an ailing system or an ailing city has some financial difficulties, and they come in as a parasite, a bribe. They want to suck the city dry, whatever assets it has left. What we've done is collectively put together a program that will allow both parties to benefit without any real pain to any one individual. Everybody's working together. One of the things that we're going to do, once we get going, is we're going to start right away, we're looking to start right away, to rehashing your system. Your system is in bad shape. It is. And who do you have to operate the system right now is even more of a heavy lift. So this is something that we feel is of the utmost urgency. To continue to go any further would be difficult for anybody. But what we like to do is also invest in the people in the city. We have a program called Pleasantville First that we're going to initiate, which means that we're going to look to hire and train people from the city of Pleasantville First to actually operate and work within the system. So a very difficult thing to do. Even when the casinos came to town, you guys remember, we're going to hire everybody from Atlantic City first. We're going to do this, we're going to do that, we're going to do this. And then, the first thing that people said was, hey, we can't find any qualified applicants, right? That's the way that they block you out from being able to benefit from any of the things that they promised you. Now, we're erasing that, right? So what we're saying is, we're going to come in, we're going to train people to be able to take those positions, right? And we're going to provide that training at no cost to the city and no cost to the individual, right? Now, it's up to that individual to go through the training, get certified, or, you know, for jobs where it requires certification, or be able to just have themselves prepared and trained to be able to manage a job like that. Obviously, the amount of jobs cannot be determined right off the bat. I can't tell you how many jobs that we're going to provide, but I can tell you this, we will be providing them to Pleasantville residents first. The other thing we like to do is, and I'm turning my back kind of to council, because they probably heard this whole spiel from me a thousand times already, so I really want to address the audience. One of the things that we like to do is actually invest in the city socially, right? So you have programs, you have things in the city that you want to have happen, okay? I spoke with Mayor Ward. She mentioned that they have some events they like to do for the seniors twice a year. We're going to be a sponsor of that. We're going to support that. I understand that you want to start a little league baseball team. We're going to provide funds to help you get that off the ground. We understand that the football team here has lost a lot of equipment, and an issue where it got damaged by water and mildew. We're going to provide help for those guys, too. The object is be part of the community, be part of the town. This way, whenever the town needs help, we're there. Whenever we need to move forward in different directions, the town's there as part of that partnership, right? So every decision that we're making, right, is going to be made between the township and our collective board, right? So it's never a situation where someone's coming in and being a parasite, right? They're not coming in and saying, okay, we're going to buy your system, you have nothing else to do with it, we can jack the rates up as much as we can, we can do anything we want to a system, and you have nothing to say about it. We are contracted for 39 years to do exactly what's in that contract. Okay? So somebody said that to me before. Somebody says, Bobby, well, that just sounds too good to be true, right? Well, when you're dealing with pension funds, right, there are some limits. The federal government says that this is how much you can make, this is what you can do, and this and the other. We play within that boundary. Bernard Capital Partners has about $750 million that they're trying to invest in cities like Pleasantville. This is the first that has a major minority inclusion. If this works, and it will, when this works, we'll be able to take this model all over the country to towns just like Pleasantville's, and we can empower the town and the people in that town to be able to be self-sufficient. One of the biggest problems that this city has always had is that it's been working from a deficit. No matter who you put in office, they're always faced with this deficit. We have Ms. Ward, who just won the office mayor, and the first thing she's met with is debt. How do you operate? How do you turn the city around? I can make you a thousand promises, but I can't do any of it without funds. And that's been the hang-up in this town forever. What we get to do now, in closing, is we get to start the slate clean. I'm sorry, the slate clean. We get to wipe that slate clean and help this ward, council, all the other professionals for this town, start with a clean slate and be able to develop this town in the proper way that it needs to be developed. Two things. Understand, infrastructure allows you to have development, right? Development doesn't come in, it doesn't want to be a part of your town unless the infrastructure's there. We're building the infrastructure. We're inviting the development. And I think it's going to be a win-win for the city, Bernard Capital Partners, and its investors. Thank you. Do you have any questions, Council? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Thank you, guys, from the Bernhardt Capital team for your presentation today. As a comment from the Business Administrator side, one of the things that we focused on primarily when we first started having these discussions was, we start talking about private companies coming into your town, what happens to your existing employees. So the point that I want to make in this statement for council, which you already know, but is most important for the public, is that our city employees that are currently employed in the sewer position will not be losing their jobs. There will be no layoffs from this transition. And again, if they are staying in the sewer field, they will be looked at first from the Bernhardt Capital side. So I think that's just important to mention, that there will be no layoffs during this transition, should this resolution and this agreement go forward.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like, I think the presentation was excellent, informative. I don't want to take up too much more time in technicalities. I don't know if you'd rather me address, Council President, the process that we've gone through when the resolution comes up, or talk to the public now about that, whatever. Continue? Okay, thank you. So just to stand up and answer your question. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joel Fleishman, and I've been lucky enough to be selected to serve as solicitor in the negotiation of this concession agreement that we're here to talk about tonight. It's been an honor and privilege to be involved with all members of council, the state, Mayor Ward, Mr. Cern, so sincerely thanking for that opportunity. This has been, where we are tonight is really the start of the next phase. Assuming that council adopts the resolution that's before them tonight, that will culminate what I think is really Phase 1 of this process, or maybe even Phase 2. Because Phase 1 was the initiation of a request for proposals that started, really, a year ago, if not more, when we went out and put proposals in the paper, publicized that we were looking to explore the concept of a concession of the system. Again, as Mr. Rowley indicated properly, it's not a sale. The system remains owned by the city throughout this whole period of time. And at the end of the concession agreement, the system still remains the property of the city. So we started this process, we went out on an RFP, and we got one. We got one response to all that work, and it was from Bernhardt Capital, SUEZ, and IGWC as a partnership. And then, that was in October of 2020. In February of 2021, council adopted a resolution after vetting the BCP/SUEZ proposal, and said, let's proceed with the negotiations of the next phase, which was the term sheet, essentially, between the concessionaire and the city, detailing what are the primary material terms that we're going to be doing this transaction on, assuming we can come to a meeting or not. That process has been ongoing now for five, six months. We've gone over every detail of the term sheet, discussed it, negotiated, made several changes. The tariff structure that will be part of this agreement has been looked at by our financial advisor, Phoenix Advisors Brian Morris is here with us in the back tonight, another integral member of the city's team. So the tariff structure, we set limits on it. How could it be raised, and what percentages it could go up each year? This has all been extremely vetted out. What are the insurance requirements? We've looked at that. We've talked to the city's insurance advisors. We've got Mary put it. There's just numerous, without going into all the details, there's numerous ins and outs, but this is where, tonight, is so critical to the process. Tonight before council is a resolution to authorize the execution of a memorandum of understanding. The memorandum of understanding simply has put, says, we now adopt the term sheet as setting forth the material terms on which we are going to proceed now to negotiate the final agreement. And we negotiated a change to the MOU. Neither party is bound until we actually enter into an agreement. So we will endeavor in good faith to come to a meeting of the minds, and if we can, we will then execute an agreement at the appropriate time. There's still other hurdles that have to be gotten over, or steps that have to go through. Just want the public to understand, there will be a full public hearing on this transaction that will be fully noticed, requires 14 days' notice, that will be published, excuse my bad, sorry, that will be fully noticed in the newspaper, published, news put outside Adam Burke's office. So that will be fully noticed. It's a full public hearing, a full written transcript. Then we make application to the local finance board for their review and approval. And we also have to give notice to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for their review and comment. They don't have to actually approve, but they do have the right of review and comment. Ultimately, assuming we get over those hurdles, we negotiate an agreement, a concession agreement, we come back before this body for an adoption of an ordinance to approve the contract. We have a target date of hopefully January. I need to talk to council about whether that, what our actual timeframe is going to look like, because there are statutory guidelines that have to be met in terms of how much notice has to be given. That is essentially the process. So we, again, tonight, before the board, before the council, is the adoption of a resolution to authorize the execution by the mayor and the city clerk of the memorandum of understanding. Attached to that, the term sheet that we've put a lot of time and effort. The sewer committee has labored over this for hours and hours. Mrs. Payton phenomenal input. So that's essentially it, Council President. Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, for you.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, we have gone over this. We've come in with a fine-tooth comb. We've been doing it since Mr. Harmon said 2019. It was that time at least. And no one, I mean, we had one person that applied, and they stuck with us. We had ups and downs, but now we're at a point where we think that this is going to work for us. And there's so many grants that we've had to turn back because our sewer is so bad, and we can't get the streets done. Everybody complains about the streets in Pleasantville, but until we get the infrastructure right, we can't do anything with the street. You know, we can't pave the streets. So this will allow us to do that, and hopefully make everyone happy. And that, along with the community things that they're going to be doing, and everything else, at this point, it took us a long time to get to this point, but I think now we... I can't speak for everyone else, but I hope we are all on the same page.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Bernard Capital and SUEZ, for your presentation.
Yes, thank you so much.
And this council, as far as work, Mr. Plankford, Mrs. Swan, and Ms. Thomas, and Ms. Maxwell, and also, I don't know if you can come on. We've worked really, really, really hard, and kind of challenged ourselves, too. Because, you know, for myself, it was, we got approved, and so I was against it, and we got to make it see where we attempted to try to go. And then, I could sell this, and believe in it, and have the ability to sell it to the community. And I think that's where we are. We've got some things we have to clean up, as the council has said, and the DIA, as well as TBT, and do all those type of things, so we can move our city forward. Okay? So with that being said, I want to move to the next one. Madam Clerk?
Excellent agenda, is agenda review. Resolution 142, authorizing the issuance of a duplicate tax sales certificate.
Any more questions?
Resolution 143, authorizing the tax collector to cancel taxes and lease on properties acquired by the city.
Any questions? Ms. Plankford?
Resolution 144, directing the planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether Block 19, Lots 13, and 15 is in an area in need of redevelopment.
Any questions?
Yes. Thank you. Can you go back a little bit? My number...
144.
144. Okay, I'm going to defer to the press ceremony of the planning board document.
When redevelopment plans are drafted, the initiative usually begins with the governing body. If the governing body does not actually draft the plan initially, the governing body directs the planning board to put together a plan, and that plan then comes back to the full council for adoption. This particular resolution relates to blocks and lots that are pulled out to make them an redevelopment area, and is directing the planning board to actually create that plan, which will then be forwarded to councils.
Any more questions? Yes. Can you tell us where those blocks and lots are? I know I didn't see this.
Is this Zell?
This is Zell.
This is Zell. This is Zell, which is Route 9, and what's the other side?
Tell me.
Route 9 and Zell. I'm going to make sure.
Madam Clerk?
Resolution 145, designate the Andale Institute of Technology as additional redevelopment for the property known as 1000 Washington Avenue, and offer...
for the property known as 1000 Washington Avenue, and authorizing negotiation of a redevelopment agreement.
Ms. Spence, can you explain?
I'm multitasking, we are, yeah. Resolution 145. The designation of ideal?
Just, just.
So at our previous council meeting, we had a, a business that is currently existed in the city of Pleasantville, operating under ideal institute of technology. These young, this organization is planning to expand their business within the city of Pleasantville, and they're looking at the Washington Avenue site, which is currently the price building, to further expand their educational program under the ideal institute of technology name. So this resolution would actually name them as the conditional developer for the 1000 Washington Avenue site.
I just want you to explain it from a, yes, that's.
That's fine, that's fine, but, so, I'm going to pause, you need to make a change, I was trying to deal with the call.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Resolution 146, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding where Bernard Capital Partners Management, containing materials, terms, and conditions for a concession agreement to be negotiated and entered into for the operation, management, and improvement of the Pleasantville sanitary sewer system, assorted to the New Jersey waste water treatment public private contracting act.
Any questions?
During regular session, we will have a presentation for Savage Collaborations regarding Resolution 147, 148. Next, 147, designate the Savage Collaborations as conditional redevelopment for the California Avenue redevelopment area, and authorize the negotiation of a memorandum of understanding, redevelopment agreement, and, and agreement of sale.
Any questions?
Resolution 148, authorizing the entry into a memorandum of understanding with Savage Collaborations, conditional redevelopment of the California Avenue redevelopment area. Next is review of the bills.
Mr. Luke.
President. For your bill, an unusual nature, I can only do, you look at my check register by check date, page number one, the bottom two items, the $582,000 payroll for the last two weeks, and then the $1,034 is our third quarter payment to the county for taxes. Our government bills to be approved, and distributed out the next couple of days. Fourth one on page one, Atlantic physician group, we had to COVID test our crop guards at our cost. Fourth from the bottom, future systems, that is a four-month billing for our future system that handles our buffer, we built corporate, and our, I can't think of names.
Right.
Yes, I go. If we go to page two, third from the bottom, garden state public products, based on council's recommendation and decision, we're setting up speed bumps and light stand by the recreation building. And if we go to page four, the top $798,000 for school taxes, and then five down, Matt Regan's auto closet, as for fuel that we use this month, and for most of you know, we will be transitioning to the county depot as of October 1st, so we expect that bill to be reduced. County information is between 20 and 25 cents a gallon cheaper, like not through a depot, but as Ms. Payton said, you may have to pump your own gas. Other than that, all the other bills are no operating bills to run the city for the last two weeks. Are there any questions?
Yes.
So, for the bill came in for Atlanta Care, and it says for crossing bars, how many crossing bars were tested?
I believe there were 14.
14, okay, thank you.
That's how many were tested, Councilwoman Tom, as well, we need about 20 some crossing bars.
Okay, now we have a public portion, anyone from the public who can speak on agenda items only, please come forward, did you name the address?
Lieutenant Harmon, Chief Lieutenant, South West Avenue, President. I have made a statement, I'm not going to repeat that, and because Resolution 146 is of such deep interest to so many of us tonight, I would ask to the solicitor if we could suspend the rules and vote on 146 first. On the agenda, when you get started, this, this vote on 146 first, you can release a lot of good people.
I want you to stay, Mr. Harmon.
The whole, I'm not, I'm not, but I'm, the whole firm is waiting, and so many others, so time, time is money.
I think they're going to stay, my guess is they're going to stay.
Well, my guess, some left already, is that, that's just intellectual compromise, I ask, why not number five first? And that's, that's a big, that's a big release.
First, I think that's up to go.
And, and, so, this is a camera.
Okay, in terms of procedure, at this point in time, we have not opened a formal meeting, so it may not be good at this point in time. Once the work session closes, you'll go and open a formal meeting. If council at that point wants to alter the sequence of those resolutions, I believe council can do that through the chair, if that is what we want.
Beautiful, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? The most, anyone from council at this time? So, I want you to adjourn the work session. So, now, good afternoon, again, the city Pleasantville City Council meeting, today's day again is September 20th, 2021, time is 7:28, the time is 7:28. This is a regular meeting of the city council. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper, made performance with the Open Color Meeting Act, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Will you please stand for invocation and flag? I'll find.
Folks, ladies, gentlemen, and all the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rowland.
Swan.
Here.
Scott. Davenport.
Present.
Tablerum.
Here.
Thomas.
President.
Kimona.
Present.
Sis trump.
Present.
Six and a chance.
Now, I can say the most, who's the previous minister?
Seven.
One, two.
All right.
Mayor, any recommendations, presentations?
I don't have any, thank you.
Okay, first, on the agenda, we have moved number five to number one, which is Resolution 146, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding for Bernard Capital Partners Management, containing material, material terms, and conditions for a concession agreement to be negotiated and entered into the operation, management, and improvement of the Pleasantville sanitary sewer system, assorted to the New Jersey waste water treatment public private contracting act.
That's our motion.
Second. Royal Paul Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Tablerum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kimona.
Yes.
Sis trump.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 145, designating ideal institute of technology as conditional redevelopment for the property known as 1000 Washington Avenue, and authorize the negotiation of a redevelopment agreement.
Motion.
Second.
Royal Paul Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Tablerum.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kimona.
Yes.
Sis trump.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Next, we have a presentation by Savage Collaborations.
Yes, Savage Collaborations.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, President, members of council, my name is Louis Magazou, I have offices in Atlantic City, violent, and Trenton, and I'm here with my client, Ren Pierre-Louis, who is the principal of Savage Collaborations. What I'm going to do is move away a little bit, so that I can take my mask off, and Ren, maybe if you'll just come, because I'm trying to find a way to speak to the governing body and the citizens at the same time. We have been, well, we've been in discussions with the city on the opportunity before us tonight, which is to move forward with a memo of understanding, a redevelopment agreement, and a agreement of sale for property on California Avenue to be used within the city, to be used as a cultivation site pursuant to the regulations that were adopted August 19th of this year for, to grow cannabis for possible recreation or medical uses for cultivation purposes. Just by way of background, I have been an attorney for nearly 40 years, and I'm tabled with the building director in Franklin County, and I've had the opportunity to represent two other applicants in the medical cannabis process. In one of those opportunities, I became aware of, well, I had always been aware of Pleasantville back in the time when, God rest his soul, Mayor Peterson was mayor, but I become aware of Pleasantville as an opportunity, and we had discussions with another company, but that company ultimately decided to move forward outside of New Jersey, had nothing to do with Pleasantville. But I recalled and retained the fact that there was very positive conversation, and I felt a real kinship with the city of Pleasantville. Then Ren approached me through a mutual friend, had heard that I had some experience in this area, and asked if we, if I would assist him in looking at various locations throughout the state of New Jersey. Over a three-day period, we looked at about a dozen locations in about three or four counties, and to be blunt and be candid, as I told both your attorney, as well as the mayor and the council president, although they were all fine presentations, there was something special about the meeting that we had in Pleasantville. We felt that there was an opportunity, we felt that we were welcome, we felt that there was an opportunity to be mutually beneficial. I also was fortunate, because I've done two already, that I had other clients that I could have possibly considered. But Ren was very special, as you'll see, you know from our presentation, but I think the community will hear from him. And I believe he brings exactly the balance of talent and experience, skill, and opportunity that will make our application successful, which will redound to the benefit of the city of Pleasantville. So what I'd like to do is get out of the way, as you know, he is an attorney, he's actually the smartest attorney in the room, because he doesn't practice, but as a consequence of that, he has the ability to handle himself, and I won't have to ask him a bunch of leading questions, he'll tell you and the community about his experience, his vision, and his thoughts about how he can work within the city of Pleasantville. So I'm going to get out of the way, so you're comfortable, and then come back for any questions or any add-on to the panel.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. So, most of the city council has heard my story before. I'm from Brooklyn, my partner Trizelle is from Orange, New Jersey, so we're not outsiders, we feel like we're from here for all intents and purposes. My family's Haitian immigrants, I'm a first-generation American. Trizelle and I both come from Holland. We moved out to California separately, we didn't knew each other before we got out there. I've been in California for about eight years. In 2012, when Colorado legalized, I realized that this was a big deal, and that if the feds, the federal government, that is, didn't come and effectively raid the entire state of Colorado, that there was something to pay attention to. And nothing happened. And then Washington legalized, and then Oregon legalized. And at that moment, I realized that this was a trend that was not going to abate, and this was, this was the future. So I sold everything I owned that didn't fit in my Toyota car roll, and I drove to Oakland. I had no idea what I was going to do, I didn't know anyone, but I knew that cannabis was there, and that that was the future, and that I needed to be a part of it. I effectively spent the next year just sort of taking myself up the hill, into the middle of nowhere, and just made myself a fixture in the industry. Eventually, I had friends and contacts, internet work. It's been a long road, but seven years later, here we are. I met my partner Trizelle about five years ago. He's a good bit younger than me, but I recognize that he's a tremendously talented young man. So I recruited him onto the team, we've been working together ever since. About a year and a half ago, we finally saved up enough money to buy our own distribution
And the mayor, I was president members of council. The final thing I'll say that will open up a question for yourself is that as I said, and I say this with humility, I had the opportunity for other large companies. And as I told you, what excited me about Ren, and I think this is going to be a night we're going to remember because he's going to be extraordinarily successful. He already is a successful man. He's going to be extraordinarily successful. And it's easier to represent big established companies. It's much more challenging, but I think much more rewarding to represent someone who you see is going to be a superstar. And you know Pleasantville, I'm from Vineland, and Vineland Pleasantville have a lot of companies, okay? Usually getting the wrong end of the stick, usually having to struggle. The gentleman talked about deficits and budgets and all of that. I'm very excited about bringing him to Pleasantville and bringing Pleasantville to him because this is really a match made in heaven, and I think it's an opportunity for great success. And the reason that's important is because it's going to be very competitive statewide, very competitive. There's only in reality about two dozen licenses that are going to be available in this round, okay? But he has a story to tell, the expertise and the experience and the financial wherewithal, and frankly Pleasantville is the right community to benefit from. The final point I'll make is, as you know, the statute allows, and you're outstanding solicitors aware of this, a up to 2% opportunity for back to the township. There's no question that we want to offer the entire amount. We also want to do the kind of things, we have to stay away from children because you don't want to be inducing them, but we want to find other ways to give back to the community because we think that's, as the other president has indicated, critically important. With that, we'll certainly open up for any questions.
I was just reminded, council, there's a medical, they put marijuana, the medicines that it brings, and a lot of seniors needing some of those medicines, or senior programs.
Yeah, that's a great point, and actually glad you brought that up. So there are really a number of benefits that communities tend to find happen sort of organically when you leave the last cannabis. First of those is you get almost always immediate decline in opioid use, almost always. Because what happens is a lot of people who are abusing opioids are doing so because they got injured at work, right? You got chronic back pain, and so it starts you down a road that ends up in addiction. It turns out that for a lot of these things cannabis is a much better treatment for chronic pain than pills would be. And when all of a sudden people have the right to legal cannabis, they find that they're able to medicate themselves without being high and having their day ruined, right? Without being on opioids, and they choose that option. And opioid use just declines immensely. In addition, whether it's to councilman Sisdruck's point, helping with arthritis, helping with just minor aches and pains, again, nothing is better than cannabis. Cannabis, as it comes to this, has been with people for as long as people have been people, right? It exists every place outside of the Arctic Circle on Earth where there've been human beings. That's not a coincidence, right? It's every single organ in our body has cannabinoid receptors. Surely that's not a coincidence either. The health benefits are tremendous. As far as helping the elderly have access, this is then we are seriously committed to. It's a matter of finding out exactly how you do it. Unfortunately, in California, what happened was before recreational, it was considered the norm that dispensaries would have effectively giveaway days where the indigent, the poor, and the elderly could come in and get medicine at steeply discounted rates. Then the state passed the recreational laws, and they actually made that illegal, right? So now we're not allowed to do that there. I hope we can do that here still. In California, that's not actually against the rules.
We're available for questions. If you have some questions, council.
Excuse me, Ren, what's your last name?
Pierre Louis.
Pierre Louis?
Yeah.
You know, one of my concerns when this here first started was my interest in the community and making sure that they had an opportunity as, you know, to grow from this here process also. And that was basically in the retail part of it. Now, can you like give us a outlook on where that will be going, whether or not the community will still be able to benefit from that aspect of the cannabis?
You mean in terms of actually launching a retail dispensary?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we fully intend to. There are, under the regs, there are some issues we need to resolve. It's not clear if I could actually even have a dispensary myself, but we're looking for dispensary.
Be precise, it's not clear that a cultivator can also have a dispenser. However, however, micros will have the capacity. And one of the other things you forgot to talk about was the commitment that Mr. Pierre Louis has to mentor businesses from the community that may want to do micros. And frankly, anyone who, not anyone should get in this business, it's very cash intensive. You can't deduct things, you can deduct from most businesses. But if you're going to get in, one way to put your toes in is a micro. But even that, if you don't really know what you're doing, you could get in trouble. What Ren has indicated he prepared to do is to mentor small businesses from the community that might want to get into micro. Now, we think, as we discussed, there probably should some limit of how many you do that because you don't want to set them up to fail. But to put on the record, what we said in our presentation, there is a commitment to do that.
Can you explain what micro means so that?
Sure. So a micro business license under the New Jersey regs is going to be effectively a small mom and pop license where they will limit you to 2,500 square feet of operating space and maximum 10 employees, and you can do one of the nicest cannabis activities. You can either do a 2,500 square foot grow, or distribution, or wholesale, or delivery. But then they cap how much cannabis you can move in a month.
And when you say distribution, you mean retail, right?
No, 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 there are no micro retail licenses. But we, we're going to get retail done here, to answer your question. It's going to take a little more work than what we expected because we didn't expect the Jersey regs to specifically follow the way they did. But our intention is to retail an allegation. Simple answer.
You said last year's or your sales, your profit, but your working your revenues were 23,000.
27 million.
27 million. Do you expect that to grow more this year or whenever you're, you're to date?
Purely in California or in general?
In California.
In California, no, I probably expect that to stay about even a little, grow a little bit. Realistically, one of the things that we're doing in California right now is we're shifting our model into a much more aggressive retail-facing model. So we're actually launching a couple of delivery services in California as we speak. And we should be opening two dispensaries hopefully by the end of the year. Long story short, so it could sort of go either way. I mean, you know, we spent the last three months building instead of actually selling cannabis.
And where is that, where is your?
Los Angeles.
As we spoke of in the group when we met, but the public would not know this, the vast majority of entrants in the cannabis business are losing money. And the way you can tell that are those that are on Canadian Stock Exchange, can't go on American Stock Exchange, have to show their losses, and they are horrific. And the reason is because they're playing a lot of people's money. He's using his money. This is another thing, good situation. Oh, one more thing I, we didn't talk about, which I think the public want to hear about.
Talk about it.
Your commitment to security and your commitment to safety and community. I think that's another one we should put on the record.
Yeah. I said that the last time I was here. Our attitude on security is pretty much that you can just never have enough. First, the security is important for actually securing our business. But then it's actually more important for just making the community feel like, like they're secured with the business there, right? Realistically, cannabis has never been, legal cannabis has never been the draw for crime that communities worry it's going to be, right? I've been in California for seven years. This is just not the problem people imagined to me. That being said, it is very much like having a bank. There's a lot of money, there's a lot of value there. It has to be protected, right? And as long as it's protected, and people can see security and they understand that it's being watched, there are no issues. That being said, we take no chances. The company we use hires only combat vets. They are fully bonded, licensed, the whole deal. And for the citizens of the town's sake, it should also be understood that the idea is really to make these places nice and nondescript, right? We're not trying to make it the kind of place where you'd be afraid to send your wife or your grandma, right? I mean frankly, we want it to be inviting is the idea, right? We want people to want to come, to want to spend their money and to feel comfortable there. So that's the vibe that we create on purpose.
Any other questions?
I think I, you know, I was under the impression that retail was in there somewhere, but being that it's not. How do you?
It is. It's just not day one.
Not day one, okay, good. So with that being said, as far as your distribution, like you're going to be growing the product, so who will you be distributing it to at that time before we do a retail?
So interestingly, council, this is one of the things that the city council and I and my partner need to all sit down and talk about because the way the New Jersey regs have carved up the industry, I'm not allowed to do what I would consider traditional wholesale distribution. That's actually barred by the regulations. So if, for example, our farm was going to grow, which I think the intention is that based on the numbers, it should be grown about 3,500 pounds of flour a month. Based on that, if we're growing 3,500 pounds of flour a month, we would need at least three local micro wholesalers just to move my product, right? Because I'm not allowed to have that license, right? So there's an extent to which the community should, like we should all plan that, right? If there are going to be micros in town, which there should be, because I support small businesses and local businesses, I am one, was one, right? It should be in coordination where they're guaranteed work, they're limited to wholesaling 1,000 pounds a month anyway. Well, if I'm growing 3,500 pounds a month, that's an opportunity for three micros right there.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
I think this would be appropriate time to have Ben Jannetti speak about the real estate piece for the public.
Good evening, council, mayor. So California Avenue is a site that's, our California Avenue redevelopment site is on the Epstein and A Carver Township Pleasantville border in Pleasantville. It's been a redevelopment area, it's approximately 20 acres. It's been a redevelopment area or an emphasis for the city for at least 20 years, if not longer. And I say 20 years because that's how long I've been working in the city doing development. We have tried as a city to do like industrial, we have tried to do residential, we have tried multiple types of projects in that location that have never seemed to be successful for the city of Pleasantville for a variety of reasons. We know it's adjacent to Price's Pit in A Carver Township. So there's been issues over the years that we had to go through. Like 2009, 2008, 2009, we designated it an area in need of redevelopment so we can, you know, help induce more developers to come to the site. We created that as an overlay for residential. We had some residential interests that all faded away because of the cost to improve the property for residential. There's no store at the property, you know, so there's some great expense to do that. When the medical marijuana was, was in the community, you know, starting to, you know, come through New Jersey, we had some folks who were interested in that site, including Mr. Magazoo was a client, but multiple people were interested in the site, well, it was own residential. And we were actually not able to move forward because when the state issues its request for licensing, you need to have a buy right property. In 2019, city council made a request of the planning board to do an examination and modify the redevelopment plan to allow for the, you know, marijuana industry to be able to operate there. So that made it available in 2019, which puts the city in a really good position because now recreational marijuana is legal, they're going to have a licensing application, but not, not every town throughout the state has a piece of property that's ready to go. City of Pleasantville does. That property is assessed at $520,000. They're going to pay the city $520,000 for the property. That's in addition to, you know, the 2% off of the, you know, the revenue that's brought in. You heard the revenue out in California, we can do the math, at least some of us can do the math and figure out that that's a big incentive to the city. It's not property taxes, that's on top of property taxes. And that's an area in need of redevelopment. It would be eligible for other types of tax abatements and things like that, but that's not in the transaction that we're talking about today. Full property taxes on the property, full property taxes on every structure that gets built, because they're going to have to build buildings, and you know, we look forward to a lot of growth there, as Ren has said. But all of that property taxes will go to the city, the revenue share will go to the city, and an acquisition price on the land will go to the city of Pleasantville.
Questions? Any questions?
Thank you.
Ren, why don't you just wrap up and just say, just to follow up your next point. As you know, I think it's important to the community, Mr. Pierre Louis said, I don't want any of the incentives, I don't want any of the discounts. As you know, there is the ability to request really as a right property taxes so that your improvements, if 0% the first year, it goes up 20%, and it takes then in six years it'd be 100%. He said, I want to be 100% right away. He said, I want, if I'm successful, I want the community to be successful. I was, he said that from the very beginning to me before we negotiated, so it really made it easy for me. The final thing I want to say is what a pleasure it's been to deal with the mayor, council president, council, and your professionals. We've had to move quickly because things do move quickly in this industry. Just to give sense to the community, my expectations within the next 30 days, they're all, they're actually supposed to by today indicate when they were going to put their applications out. They haven't done that, I think it's going to happen shortly. My sense is within the next 30 days, the applications will be out, probably 30 to 60 days after that, they'll be, you have to put, you have to put the applications in. When I say the application is out, the request for application will be out. So this is going to all happen in the next 60 to 90 days. When we met with Mr. Serny, we made it, we were very clear that we had to move quickly, and you folks have been extraordinary in that regard. The residents of this community should know that you left no stone unturned to negotiate a great deal for the township, a fair deal for the township, but also a new expedition thing. And we're very grateful because without that, we wouldn't have been able to move forward.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Resolution 147, designating Savage Collaborations as additional redevelopment for the California Avenue redevelopment area and authorizing the negotiation of a memorandum of understanding with Redevelopment Agreement and even upset.
Yes, sir.
Ropaul Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Semleron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes, medical professor.
Yes.
Yes.
And Sismo?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Next, Resolution 147, authorizing entry into a memorandum of understanding with Savage Collaborations, additional redevelopment of the California Avenue redevelopment area.
Second.
Ropaul Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Yes.
Semleron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Kamona.
Yes.
Sismo?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Next, I need a motion to pay for bills.
Motion.
Ropaul Swan.
Yes.
Davenport.
Stayed.
Semleron.
Yes.
Thomas.
Kamona. Yes.
Sismo?
Yes.
Next, the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to come forward to speak at this time, to name your address? Anyone from the public?
Good evening again. I wanted to say, this afternoon I was invited to stop in Atlantic City branch for a program that they're having that includes Pleasantville students, and I'm really excited about it. It's called Atlantic City Boys and Girls Club Goals Gear Up. And what it is, is something like we have here, the Carver Early College Program, but there they have it, and it's, when they wrote the grant, they included Atlantic City and Pleasantville in it, so our students will be able to take advantage of it from seventh to 12th grade. And that's such an opportunity because when they graduate, they graduate with the 60 credits. They have the, you know, many of them will graduate their associate's degree. And that's really, really, I was there and I was just so, so impressed that they were there. Mr. Chaplin was supposed to be there, but he had other obligations and couldn't be, but they spoke very highly of him. And for all, everyone that's out there and parents and everyone else, if you know, the applications are going to be coming out in the spring. They're going to start after the spring semester. So encourage everyone to take advantage of it. That's such an opportunity that many of our students wouldn't get. And that's it. Everyone have a good evening.
I have a question about that. Did they say how many students they were going to accept?
They didn't give any numbers to that. No, but the applicant, when the applications go out, they're going to, you know, reach out to schools, talk to the county and the school for the, you know, get that one down. They didn't say how many.
Good evening, everyone. I want to say thank you for all those who came out this evening. I just want to say to my colleagues that I'm excited that we came up with this agreement to pave our streets, to get our infrastructure done, and then we can have a smooth product throughout our cities. But good night, everyone. Hope to see you at the next meeting.
To use a hockey analogy, tonight we kind of had a hat trick. We have Ideal coming in and expanding, we have Suez, the concessionaire, and we have Savage Collaborators coming into town. I think it's been a pretty productive night. Hopefully, years from now, we can come back and pat ourselves on the back for the work that we did tonight. And Mr. Ren Pierre Louis, you had me at a place that your mother, that your wife and your grandmother would go to. Because that should be a test for all of us up here to say, yes, I would have my mother go there, I would have my father go there. If it's good enough for our relatives, then it's good enough for our citizens. And that was pleasing to hear that, so thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming out. Just wanted to thank you guys for investing in our town. It's really funny how everything comes at a head in one meeting. It's like everything takes three years, and then all of a sudden, one night, it's all over. So, but thank you very much and appreciate it.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to thank the gentlemen for bringing, for coming to Pleasantville, making it a better place, and that's what we want, so thank you very much, appreciate it. Hopeless will appreciate it also, what we're trying to do again. So God bless you all, have a blessed night.
First of all, I'd like to recognize our ex-councilman, Mr. Harmon, and Mr. Stroud over there. Thank you guys for coming out. Also, our superintendent and our assistant superintendent here also of schools. So just like, thank you guys for attending, and you know, to the companies that have just joined this family in Pleasantville, you know, we appreciate you and look forward to moving things forward and making Pleasantville better, so you know, thank you guys for being here.
Council President, I feel to say thank you to the Bernard Group, Bernard Capital Partners, and also to Savage Collaborations. Thank you both for your presentations. We look forward to everything going smoothly.
I'll just echo everything else that's been said up here with the council, my co-councilman. And there was a letter that was sent to the police department. The police department, it was from the family of Sandra Walker Sawyer, and just thanking them, thanking them for the officers that worked the field, the officers that stood out there and made sure she was fine, and that the family was at ease and got there the correct way because it was pouring down rain and they weren't let down. And they especially really wanted to send this letter because in fact, no matter if they did that type of treatment or in their hometown, and I like the city, but she did for the city of Pleasantville, so I'd like to thank the officers for that. Thank you. And I'd like to, we lost a person to the community the last couple of days. Who had been a mentor of mine, his name was Joseph Yul, Joe Yul, he ran the teaching spoken 330, he ran the teaching spoken 331, 1990 to 2007. He was president of Democratic Club for a number of years. He also was a community activist and gave mentor to so many people, affected so many people's lives, including mine. So at this time, he just got done, standing for all of the assignments. For those who. The rest in peace. Mr. Solicitor, we need to go into second session, but I think we also need a break for it. Is that a closed session? I want a motion, I need a motion to close this. Still in the.
Yes, you're going to make a motion to have a five to ten minute recess.
You want to make a motion to make a five to ten minute recess?
Motion.
Set back. I'm going to come back and I'll go in close.
I think you guys want a motion to go into a second session. Motion.
I think we've got a detective session. Second, thank you.
Senator, you need some substance in terms of that motion, as I understand it, it'll be a discussion of contract matters, specifically a discussion relating to the reorganization of municipal court services and potential entry into agreement for the providing of such services. That's the nature of the matter.
Yes, Mr. Solicitor.
In executive session, the mayor and city council discussed certain contract matters, specifically the possibility of reorganizing municipal court and securing an agreement pursuant to which the municipal court services will be tenured by the Atlantic County Regional Municipal Court. Council discussed that and has decided not to join the Atlantic County Regional Municipal Court at this time.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? Question at this time? Are you taking a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contested. Bless you.
Bless you guys, enjoy your night.